My delight is to reply United States of America. To the Republic which stands on the nation under our beautiful face. Everybody can tell us. We can make standing for long silence or sit when we can't. Or in a little bit. Okay. Hello. How are you?
I'm all right, Joe. Visitors already?
Well, we're not, it's not opening. Well, we don't see.
The last time I listened to this Zoom, I couldn't hear anything. Because you have no microphone. So I can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear me.
I'll tell you that would have been nice to know for tonight.
Well, I assumed that you were just coming down here and I didn't think that there was gonna be, that you guys could all be here, but the public couldn't.
That's right. We're protecting the safety of ourselves and the people around us.
Against, you're here. But the public can't be? Doesn't make sense. I, I personally think it should be entirely on Zoom. I, I, I think it is a much better method and a great system. And I really think you ought to have your meetings on Zoom. It is, you can hear everybody. I think everybody can hear you.
Is there anybody that didn't hear us last night? Well, Joe, did you hear?
I don't know if I heard this one.
Then why are you having a problem hearing? Because I, I, I watched it. I couldn't, you couldn't hear. By, by the way. I mean, either way, you know. It's, if, if you're, if you're going to allow a pub, have a public meeting. We should need to be able to attend in person or on Zoom. Whatever options you're giving yourselves, you need to give us.
It's the protection that you give to.
I completely agree with the protection.
We can't control how many people show up here and the space that we have. It's in the interest of protecting people. So I'll ask you kindly.
I, I will generously head back out. Okay? No, I wasn't trying to create a consultation, I was, you know. So I would appreciate it if I could get onto Zoom. Well, actually, I don't have anything to say. You know? It's sort of off. So enjoy and have a great meeting and I look forward to possibly better microphones and better Zoom. Catch you guys later.
Thanks. Do we have any more comments from the public?
We didn't.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we had someone walking in. Let me do a roll call here. Let's start with a roll call.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Beckuselli? Mr. Diawaducci?
Here.
Mr. Colosimo?
Here.
Mr. Verducci?
Here.
Ms. Minor?
Here.
Mr. Shelsky?
Here.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
Solicitor McDermott?
Here.
Engineer Barrett? Chief King? Chief Castain?
Here.
Then, Mr. Miller?
Here.
Okay, I'd like to open up the comments on the floor. We have any visitors that wish to speak?
Let me unmute everyone.
Do we have any visitors that wish to speak? No visitor that wishes to speak? Only ones? Only twice, so.
I've unmuted them, Joe. They keep muting themselves. Yep. See, that's why I went through each one.
There's one trying to connect. Okay, we'll move on with the regular meeting. I need a motion approved to set down a 14th, 20th, 23rd, 28th, estimated.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the October 2020 builders.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the October 16th, 23rd, 30th, and November 6th, 2020 payrolls.
So moved. Next second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1015 and ordinance of Borough of Bridgeville adopting minimum construction standards for the repair, improvement, destruction of public infrastructure within the borough.
I'll move. Second.
Joe, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1016, ordinance of Borough of Bridgeville electing to amend its non-uniform pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article 4 of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law, agreeing to be bound by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Retirement Law as amended and as applicable to member of the state.
So moved.
Nick, you need a, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1017, ordinance of the Borough of Bridgeville authorizing the occurring of non-electoral debt by judicial and general obligation note in the principal amount of $1,750,000, counting to pay and collecting unlimited tax power for payment of the note, fixing the form, interest rate, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for payment thereof, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other comments as provisions in respect of the note.
I'll send you.
Move, Juanino, one second.
Second.
Second, let me take all in favor. Opposed? Sorry, I meant to make note that Joe Berice is staying. Any opposition? Motion passes. In a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-16, a resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville authorizing execution of cable franchise agreement between the Borough and Horizon Pennsylvania LLC.
I'll move. Second.
You know, and Joe Colosso, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve executing a service agreement, noble environmental, for the 2021 electronic and household disaster waste recycling collection net.
So moved.
Second.
This is good, Joe. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid received in award contract amount of $117,800 to JetJack for the Backwater valve contract phase three. I made a motion. I made a motion. $117,800 to JetJack. And Bruce, thank you. Motion about second?
I'll send.
Joe, second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid received in award contract in the amount of $89,860 to JetJack Incorporated, as read, pending certification by the Borough Engineer for Flower Hill Road Stormwater Turbine Project.
Subject.
Subject to certification.
Subject.
Wanting to. Read it, read it?
Not at all.
This, uh.
This would, it already has certified.
I'll have it.
It's a work of, it's a very important.
Did I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You take it in a second?
I'll send.
And then, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid received in award contract in the amount of $106,811 that Rex Enterprises has read pending certification by the Borough Engineer in a Changeway Spring Bank stabilization, stabilization project.
Second.
You can, Nick, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid received in award contract in the amount of $273,500 to LMNR Excavated LLC, as read, pending certification by the Borough Engineer for the Waterline Park Flood Improvement Project.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? And motion passes. I need a motion to schedule and authorize advertisement for 2021 budget meeting for Monday, November 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to ratify the appointment of the law firm, Binsmore &amp; Scholl, as special bond legal counsel.
I'll send.
Wait, one second.
It's for the loan.
For the. Right. Okay.
Try and hear our.
I understand.
Second.
Second, you take it? All in favor? Opposed?
I have a question. I'll just verify, we not have enough to do off these streets. Should I abstain from this vote as well? I don't want to see a boss who would be consistent with their priorities. So I'll abstain.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to authorize a disbursement of $20,974 from the Capital Project Fund, Stanic's Next Generation Construction Company, for payment number one, final of the Marshall Street Alford and Walbrook Repair Project.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to authorize a disbursement of $6,913.76 from the Sewer Fund to advance plumbing and drainage for final payments on both the 2016 and the 2017 CCPV inspection and clean projects.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
I don't know about that. Any idea why it took so long? I can't. It's retained since that part of my call. It says still over the last.
Pass that motion. Motion to authorize a disbursement of $8,487.64 to JetJack Incorporated for payment applications two and three filed for the 2018 CCPV inspection project.
I'll send.
You know?
Second.
And Joe, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to authorize a disbursement of $3,397.23 from the Capital Project Fund for Glory Construction Corporation for payment application two filed for the Maple Street retaining wall project.
I'll send.
All in favor? Opposed? And motion passes. I need a motion to authorize purchase and erection of an LED display message board at the Borough Building for North American Display installed by Old South Digital Science with Mason Report completed by Lloyd &amp; Sons and the Code Project House, $37,235.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this for the Congress? Is this for the bricks? I mean, was this being.
Yeah, we got a picture of the project. Yeah. So we went with the brick. Okay, so we, we pass that motion, correct? Yes, yes. I need a motion to authorize executing a confidentiality agreement and authorization to Southwest LME Tax Collection District, supporting the Borough Manager as the authorized contact person for the Borough.
I'll send. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the following real estate tax refund due to a change in assessment requested by the Real Estate Tax Plan. Copy of the official changeover has been attached request. This is for year 2020, the block block 255-8, that's 295, a amount of $3,981.25 to Bridgeville Savings and Loan.
So moved. Second. I have a question.
Wait. I assume that their assessment was lower. And this is just for any property. Does the school district handle the discussions or are they gonna go to the appeal process?
I mean, I can speak to that time. I like a little bit of a. But this is by Marshall result and field, you file a body of district for the back though.
I assume by the bank they're getting a refund.
Well, that just means they failed on my field and it's basically like if they anticipated this field and it went through the field and it's conciliation or. So, no, I mean, consolidation. We try and, well, I think we don't get often because. Unless it stays. Yeah, but this is a change that resulted in the disposition of a field that didn't see that was county, school district, and, uh, and the board of board. You got, similarly, it's settled, it usually. Somebody was there.
So we barely wouldn't, you know, get the school board or the school district. Like, and trying to.
Well, they started with one of the, yeah, the, the school district's list, they're basically.
To be honest, the only real reason why I'm asking is to, to get $39,000 or almost $4,000 as a refund, it's a pretty significant change. The assessment, I would assume. And I don't, it's the borough tax, it isn't. Right. It isn't the school district tax, so $4,000 from the borough tax, pretty significant drop. So, property must go significantly. So I'm questioning, did anybody, for example, the school district? Review that at all?
I'm sure it was reviewed. I mean, I looked at that to be information, right? Right? Next, I'll find my universal belt.
Any other questions? We even passed that motion.
You didn't, all, all in favor?
Okay. All in favor? Yeah, I, I oppose. And motion passes. I need a motion to accept the pay any commission due September 2020 real estate tax refund.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 2020 treasure.
I'll send.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept September 2020 police report.
Second.
Listen, I do, Jake, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the disbursement of $74,730.90 for partial payment number one, approving change order number one, the amount of $1,776 to install eight-foot diagram posts along the road portion of spring bank to ski-ready site development and preview.
I'll send. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Got it. Okay, we're moving on to committee reports. Administration?
I'm gonna have a, a round we're just going to go.
Okay. My name is Joe Berice.
Thanks, Bill. First of all, I, I wanna thank Joe Carr, you've been doing a great job on getting our finance committee informed as well as helping us through understanding the budget. And he has done, given us some analysis the last few months and sure enough, we got one through September 30th. Some of the notes that he prepared for us, the general fund revenue is 93.21% of the year. Compared to last year, this same, it was at 90.61%. So the revenue coming in is up. The real estate collection, collection was slightly compared to last year, 95% up. This budget last year was 93, so some great things there. Some areas that we expected as we were going through this pandemic, areas that were expected to be down was, of course, the business mortgage tax, rent, title tax, and fines for obvious reasons. Due to unfortunately businesses aren't open and. Will be the capacity. Earned income tax is ahead of budget by 5% as last year. And we're expecting that to be at budget or even a little bit above. So therefore, the good part is, is that layoffs didn't affect, uh, on this much. So that's wonderful to hear. Obviously, there were still some, some out there. So we hope that things get better for, for residents. As far as expenditures, they are down this year. We ended at just shy of 64% of our budget. Whereas last year, we're at 72%, so, so really good there. A lot of this also helped that we got that county cares aid of $125,000. We'd only be, I had $12,000 if it wasn't for that. So that's, that really, really helped us. So it was great that we were approved for that grant. The garbage fund is performing as budgeted, so nothing really notable there. And the sewer fund revenue is down by 7% compared to last year. But the expenditures seem to be about the same, so we're doing well. So in a nutshell, we're doing really well, so it's, it's great to see that we haven't, um, too many cash flow issues. We do, is one of our notions was, we are going to have a, move into the public meeting. Can I assume it's the same type of format?
It said, later, you said, no, no?
Number second.
So, probably we don't have to advertise, start to. So I would say let's plan it for this format unless something were changed for that.
That's what we need to do this week, change the vendor.
Should we have a discussion on it right now? That's why I was bringing it up.
Order on the venue option B. Okay, Andrew, it's a budget meeting.
Right. It's just a discussion meeting of, Joe's gonna talk about some of the highlights and things that he has concern over or some positive things or some suggestions. It's, it's for us to be able to talk all together about budgets. We all, it needs to be a public.
I misunderstood. I thought was the point.
No, 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 talk about the budget.
Yeah, let's have it the same format.
Same format. Okay, thanks. So that is November 2nd. And I also will be having a finance committee meeting. The 21st, 20th?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, the 20th. 11 o'clock between Finance Committee and, uh, and our Borough Man. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Joe Colosso.
Uh, I have two too much. I took a ride on the block today. They have, like, stone work. A basin with the asphalt paving. It was saying that's on the, on the concrete, and four, there's a couple of forms still up, we have to do a curve, I guess. It looks like it might be on whole way from the lower yard ball field. But sure, it certainly has some.
You must, show me your.
Yeah, we just lost the cast.
Okay.
The meeting.
We lose. So go ahead and continue, Joe. Thanks.
So I just, I, we discussed last month, the way you get the ball field lowered and. And then, I'm trying to.
Okay.
That's all I really have on parks. Something from the cog. You know, probably dealing with the others, John, Mr. Praxick, Stotons, and that's where. He was on the cog for years and years. And he was involved, kind of, the founder. Ever by the book. Which seemed very customary. That's all I, I say left.
Sorry, here's one more. Public Works Building, you know?
Kind of taken shape. It's really lengthy, uh, program. But the company, they put the interest to people who are committed to the street to street from last. Completed. Every Wednesday. Can finish for the season of September the 30th. See, we don't have any letter anymore to let the people know about this thing, so somehow, hey, they'll get that. The leaf collection start Monday, October 12th. It will run through the first week of December. Leaves are to be tracked into the pile of the dirt, as usual. If you don't do that, we can pick it up. Please do not place any other yard waste such as stick or debris or leaves in the piles. And the rest is grass cutting, sent here soon and said, and said, this is important for the public to know. And I can be talking to people like the secret. The new truck will be your neighbor this month. And it's, it seems to get itself more detailed or whatever. Other than that, it's a normal routine that's done in mechanic part. Only one thing I must definitely say that public court in turn, I have to make a joke to the few people here. And it's, it's, it's doing wonderful. Those things are very important. That I read in the first couple lines, for the people, for the community, for them to know when it's a topic, when it's important, how we're gonna do it. Maybe in garbage, I don't know, somehow. Do it.
That is, that is gonna be in this month's garbage film, one page, news, whatever, we got things. So that will go out this month.
Okay, that's, okay. And everything else is a normal, uh, routine here. And, and they complement to the public court. After Joe Coward, I tell you, public court is a different point. And I should be appreciative, Joe.
I'd like to say one thing. Turn to your spark. When we go to the ball, we get a little choppy. They weren't their mind off. A white guy occasionally will walk the trail there and they did a great job. So thank you.
Anything else?
Get shot.
Thank you. That's probably safe. I don't have any important. Thank you. Mayor Benny Pope.
Thank you to Councilman Nick Giselle, the Rail Yard, the Bridgeville Police Department, and the mayor will be at the Rail Yard starting lock on December, uh, October 31st by 7:00 and, uh, treats for the children in, in unity. And I ran by a couple of works department also for getting in touch with the gaming division to come and collect the dead gear from the backyard of the museum's fine mosque.
Thank you. Uh, this is, let here. Uh, Solicitor.
I've, I've never heard of the board. Come out and do the vision of that. Other than, you know, we are. Check the board.
Borough Engineer Kevin Brett.
Yes, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yes, we, um, as you had on agenda tonight, there was a number of the projects awarded for bid. We will expedite the park project. There is grant funding involved with each one of those projects. So we have to get the contract awards out and takes about 10 days to get them back. The county has to give authorization for notice to proceed. And then those projects will get started. We will schedule the pre-construction meeting as early as possible so that they can begin lowering the field as the big item so the other project can get completed. The good news on those bid awards was you, you were collectively about 50. The good news on those bid awards was you were collectively about fifty thousand under what the estimates were. So they come in on budget. The one was slightly over, but that was one with Jane Street. And it was joined with the actual field lowering. So that entire grant ended up being under about fifty thousand. So that was a good thing. Update on the road program. They should be in sometime over the next week. They're in South Fayette, milling and paving right now. So they will move in to mill. It'll take about three to four days for that work to be completed. We did get together with the street committee and reviewed the long-term plan and we sent a draft over for budgeting for that. Other updates, we did include in this month's report a couple photographs of work that was completed by Stefanic, the concrete poured down in the stream on the abutment. And the manhole, they did get the collar port around it. They are waiting. It's back ordered item for the framing grade or framing lid to come in for that manhole that's down in a stream. And we did have a Zoom call also with Joe to discuss the next round of grant funding that's possible through Grow. And we provided him some information in for budget purposes. And there will be a meeting in either October or November to discuss the potential for getting a Grow grant. Elka Sands provided some pretty good input on how we should package that. So hopefully you will be eligible for that next round of funding. Any questions on the report?
Okay, we're good, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our chief, you're in with us there.
For most of the time, we had a total of nineteen calls. One building fire, city, much, pretty, two times, litter vehicle access, one call and numerous other calls. Use some of those notes, know it's kind of a comedy here, that you're trying to charge it on. Just be safe. We don't, you know, any signs or, you know, that you see at your house. Feel free to call us and come check it out for you guys. Like you say, you also have a fundraiser going on right now. There are slave tax, the chance one might see any home fire, fire, or anything you have. And other than the, we'll be at the Trump retreat with the rail yard. Also be trouble, be trouble neighborhood because always there are trucks. Who have my truck or somebody down there with Trump retreat. And we'll be passing up, you know, going to
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Call volume for EMS is down still. We haven't hit the benchmark that we were at before COVID hit. I did submit a report earlier to you all. COVID is still out there. So everybody be careful because we are transporting patients that are ending up COVID positive. If you haven't noticed in your mail, hopefully the residents have noticed that our donation drive has gone out. And I apologize to the fire department if that kind of went out at the same time theirs did. We, this is our fall drive. We typically use this for capital projects where we'll target a heart monitor or piece of equipment that we'd like to purchase. Unfortunately, with everything going on this year, we're going to be using those funds strictly for operations and paying the bills this time. So we would appreciate any support that the community could give us when it comes to the donation drive. One good thing that's been going on out there is we were able to get a really good grant writer. She's done a phenomenal job for us. And she was able to get a very rare AFG grant, which was opened up for PPE in regard to the COVID response. And she was able to get us a sixteen thousand dollar AFG grant for Pappers. So we were lucky enough to get these from the Drager Company, which are helmets that have an incorporated pure air respirator system. So if you see our guys walking around in these helmets and face shields, basically is their protection for the COVID situation. They do provide a filtered air to the face and will not require them to wear a N ninety-five or eye protection anymore. It's all incorporated in the helmet and part of the air system that they will be wearing as a backpacks or on a belt pack. So we thank Jordan for doing such a phenomenal job because that helps us, especially because the supply chain on PPE, the N ninety-fives and gowns and everything is still broken. We're having a tough time finding anybody that has an open supply chain. We were just advised by our vendor the other day that our glove supply would be limited to twelve boxes a month when truly we probably use twenty-four to thirty a month. So we're going to have to try and find some other source to supplement those. So it's an interesting time out there and but that's about it for EMS. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Stay safe. Anybody from the social society?
Yes. Down top on the table are copies of the note cards that the social society is selling. They're the colored ones for six or seven dollars. And we're hoping they can support this because we weren't able to have our normal fundraising. President Wise will purchase the votes. Also, the last Tuesday this month, the historical society program will be Salem witch trials. Todd DeVastino will be the person who's speaking on that subject. And the historical society will also be taking part in the Trump and treat at the rail yards parking lot. And President Wise would also like to thank all who purchased wrapper tickets, the baskets that are also at the rail yard and were selected on September third. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody to the library, present? Sorry?
I've asked it, Don.
Ben, are you, you're muted on our screen. You're speaking about the library. Nothing. I will move on. Parking board. Anybody from parking? No. He is all that he's he can't use. Okay, planning commission representative. Is Mike out there? Anybody else, Mike?
I don't think so. I didn't see, I didn't see Dale or anybody.
Kevin, for us?
We had a real quick meeting the last, this past month or September, I'm sorry. Next month, we'll have a, it's a, we'll have a pretty extensive meeting going over what we're going to be presenting to council as far as getting ready for your, you know, for budgets at all. You know, you know, we've been doing that all year and it's kind of coming to a head next month to what we wanted, what we would like to see with the budget for planning. So the last month, I said it was a pretty quick meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Let me just tell them also, the board was saying this month's planning mission meeting, I heard everyone's attend. It's on Zoom, but the engineer is future lending this long-term flood solution plan that encompasses some ways to do flooding along the block on the creek. So it's rather apparent that everyone participates. And it's kind of exciting that we're going to be kicking these capital projects, planning mission, trying to get some public input. So just make sure we're the seven thirty, October twenty-sixth. Mr. Verduz is saying twenty twenty-one budget is underway, pretty much notoriously pleaded. I'm almost going to have the draft budget to the finance group by the end of this week so that we can have discussions at next week's finance. So I want to give it to you guys. You can at least review it over the weekend. The Rose Hall and Shore policy for new, good news, they actually went down a half percent next year. That's an increase. I'd say the decrease, granted it's small, but anything even minor of an increase up in this capacity. So those people, quarterly update, we're trying to get back into the routine, having a newsletter. At last, maybe we talked about doing an annual newsletter, but we're also doing an in-house mini newsletter that's included with every garbage bill. Kind of like a short coffee talk, something that you can read real quick over breakfast and at least know what's going on in town. So as printed, it's going out next week with garbage bills. Code enforcement has been pretty proactive part of my job. The past month, I've taken some notices for issues in town. A lot of them being debated. I've had issued two citations this past month, but overall, everyone's been very cordial in addressing issues. So that's all I can add. If I have any questions, that's what happens.
Any questions for Kevin? Thanks, Joe. We can go back to the, the Ben and the library together. I don't know if anybody can hear me. Not there, okay. Okay, anything on our old business?
I don't hear us. I'd like to know while we get to the fact.
Yeah, yeah. Can you folks hear us on the Zoom? Interested in getting feedback? Yeah, get away. I said, don't stop. I said, Pat, the way you can hear us?
You can't.
Yeah. Mike, you can hear as well?
Yeah.
Mike, over.
I think they can do themselves.
I can hear you, Mike.
All I thought was the word feedback.
Pat, what did you say?
I said, all I heard was the word feedback. You seem to be wanting public comment, but I can't understand what you're asking for comment on.
We wanted to know if you could hear us. Can you hear us?
I can hear that. I
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else on our old business? About new business, anything on our new business?
Cameron, I definitely want to, but I know you made a very clear answer for the protection of everybody. It does you work. But I believe very strongly that if we make arrangement with the firewall to, nobody, we used dominated, it is not the effective preparation that firewall does. I believe that we actually can separate ourselves and the tank, if these people make the account. That's my suggestion. I think we should start to do that because this could go, who knows? Maybe not a year, maybe not a month, not a two, two something to ensure a thing about at least. As I said, it's a plenty of room over there where they have weddings. We can add a really public something to think about. And we don't have to, what's wrong? Or else, just to go straight to Zoom, I think we're very successful to just do the Zoom. One or the other. This is no, this works good for us. It's no problem. I have no complaint. But for the public, public, it is I think it's enough in my understanding. I think I've arranged since we have links that we can exercise is public, you get to get it. That's my opinion. I won't be mad one way or the other. I mean, we should concede that, at least all day coming up and I don't know, something to think about.
I will, I will say, I think everybody's frustrated. It would be our desire to have a public meeting. I don't think anyone shows us how to react. I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to the community and the public and the attendees to be safe. And I hear you and all that discussion and maybe determination of who's moving forward. But I don't think, these decisions to hold these meetings, these last month, were not, there was no intention to withhold any information from the public. I think we've been very upfront and been using this format to allow people actually normally wouldn't have a meeting or a tent. So it's an interesting time and we're all trying to advocate for the best we can. Appreciate you, Tom. Anything else on our new business?
Yeah, I'd like to thank and welcome everybody in the community to the rail yard and conjunction of the criminal law department, police department, up to society, Trump and treat on October thirty-first from five to seven PM. If you're interested in joining, please email the rail yard or Facebook the rail yard for limited parts, parking spots. We're trying to do social distancing. Rail yard providing gloves, so people can hang out candy safely, requiring a white wear mask. Please spread the word to your local community, your neighbors, let them know that we'll be down at five to seven. Before church treating starts at six. So if you want to come down and get some king size candy bars, we'll be waiting for it.
Anything else on our new business? No, I don't think we have much with your second. All in favor? Oppose?